Mayor, recording has begun.
Meeting to order. Town clerk, would you please take roll call?
Councilmember Trolinger? Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Present.
Councilman Jenkins?
Present.
Mary James, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. And if I could have you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting agenda. I will entertain a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I don't have a motion, but I would like to amend the agenda as presented to remove the Bolton initial review of the pension plan so that we might invite Bolton in to help us understand the items that he's presented.
All right, so you have that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, underscoring or just adding to what Councilwoman Bryant Ward just indicated with the motion, I would urge us, if we could, to have a work session where we have all the parties involved where we can sit and walk through and understand what the pension system is and what we want. And what I mean by all parties, I would also include, I'll see Bolton, the staff, and also perhaps a representative from the FOP. Because I'm personally a little bit confused about where we're going with this. So I would just urge us, if we can, to have a work session set aside for this topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything? And I have a question for you, Mr. Manuel, or any of the staff here that might be able to answer this. I know we're against a clock. January is our shot clock, I guess. Would we be able to get Bolton in for a work session to have this discussion and still keep on track to make sure that it's done by, it was mentioned, January?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, I believe we can make the request. I think Bolton would do their next available, our next available meeting, whether next week or the week after. I think, I don't know, Karina, if we have an estimate on the time of the study, I would estimate thirty to forty-five days. So that would still put us on a timeline where we should have the data back before we enter our budget discussion.
Thank you very much. I have a motion that has been properly seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Motion carries, so we will amend the agenda. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from September twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three. Do I have a motion to accept as presented?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes for September twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This brings us to our public comment session, section. If anybody would like to speak this evening, I ask that you state your name, whether you live in the Incorporated Town Limits, and if you could limit it to three minutes, I'd appreciate it. Man in the hat back there? Would you like any? Okay, you're good. All right. Moving on, hearing none, we'll go on to our next part of the agenda, which is our slip lining purchase. Director Stahl, floor is yours.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. We have a large sinkhole over on Williamsburg Circle, and it's due to the fact that a section of the corrugated metal pipe has rotted through on Williamsburg Circle and just shows part of the problem because as we know, that neighborhood is not that old. It's about twenty years roughly since that was, that infrastructure was put in, but it has exceeded its lifetime at this point and needs to be either replaced or lined. Due to the fact that it is under the sidewalk and the curb and gutter and all of that on the side of the road, we generally try to line that pipe where we pull another pipe, a plastic pipe, through the old pipe, and then we pump concrete into the interstitial space in between that pipe and the other. We looked for a long time on how to purchase a special pipe that we could pull through the corrugated metal pipe, and we were able to locate this, it is a screw together. It's both smooth on the outside and smooth on the inside. It's high-density polyethylene, but it screws together in twenty-foot sections. So as we push one section in, we screw the next section attached to it, and we only really have to dig up one twenty-foot section of the side of the road to be able to slip line this pipe through there. We finally found a Lane Industries down in Virginia that would supply us with that pipe. It's actually manufactured out in Indiana. And so I bring this forward, we have, it's the exact same pipe that we've purchased for when we were slip lining all of Centennial Street. We've purchased a lot of this pipe over the years. We have also been using dredge pipe, which is the high-density polyethylene where it's in forty-foot sections. We cut it, and you actually use heat to weld it together. But we, and as you recall, we bought thirty-six hundred feet of that pipe used, and we have been doing a lot of that when it's eighteen-inch pipe. This happens to be thirty, so we have to go back to the Lane Industries pipe, and we would ask for your approval to purchase that pipe so that we can fix this one section over inherited green.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll open the floor up to Council if you have any questions.
Madam Mayor, again, Councilman Jenkins, for, thanks for bringing this forward. That's a big pipe, thirty. Is there any delay in obtaining the material or, I mean, a supply inventory?
We don't believe so at this point. Once we, we haven't ordered it, of course.
Sure.
They generally try to have, and when we originally did this, it's been a little bit, but we hope to have it fairly quickly. And that's the reason we've always gone with Lane is to be able to get it fairly quickly because it's, it is something that needs to happen because the sinkhole has greatly enlarged and, and needs to be, of course, fixed.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, so from Council, I'm looking for a consensus to move it forward to later on in our agenda for legislation. Councilman Trolinger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
And I am as well. Thank you very much. And while you're up here, how about we go on to the next one? Southwest Quadrant Concrete Infrastructure Repair and Replacement.
Yes. Madam Mayor, Council, we, as you know, built a twenty-four-inch gravity line all the way from the wastewater treatment plant up to the Maples. And we were able to take out the pump station. We were able to connect the hotel. Just today, we connected Panda Express and the church. So everything on that southwest side of three oh one is now connected into that twenty-four-inch gravity line. As you know, we had a price from Gradient Construction, who was also doing a job for us down at the Southwest Quadrant Pump Station, and we got them to actually install the line. But we felt that it would be better for us to do the concrete work because we weren't sure, they weren't sure how much concrete work was actually going to be needed and how much they were going to tear up in the process. So that number, we felt, was going to be high. They knew that number would be high if they were having to bid that upfront. So we left it off the bid, and now we're going to try to use one of our contractors to come back and put that in. We got three bids for that concrete work, and that was from Austin Dirtworks, Gradient Construction, and Love Concrete. They were anywhere from forty-eight thousand up to sixty thousand plus. And so I would recommend to you tonight that we select Austin Dirtworks. I spoke with Mr. Austin today, and he could start this work not next week, but the following week. And so that will be in time for us to then pave because we have a lot of paving to do down there to patch all those different places. And we'd like to do that when Bean is in here doing our fall paving project. So we expect to start fall paving sometime in early November, and we would like to be able to have the concrete work done before then. So we, we went out, we solicited three bids for this concrete work, and we'd like to get going on that as soon as possible. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to.
I'll open the floor for Council. Any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Director Stahl. This is off-topic. With the paving that we're going to be doing, will we be doing anything over on Kent Avenue?
Oh goodness. We have the list. Mr. Manuel, do you happen to have access to the list?
Looking at what you have, this is, I'm assuming this is West Street Drive, Maple Parking Lot, S H eight three oh one.
Those are all with respect to the project that we had done. We're going to pave that, but we've actually created this year's paving list for the fall. Of course, we're going to target around five hundred thousand dollars worth paving for this fall, and we're using that same Bean contract that we bid out last spring. So we're still using that, and it's for the same price that we did in the spring. I haven't presented the list yet, but I apologize for not knowing that. I just haven't looked at it in the last two weeks.
No worries. I'm talking about the parking spaces that they requested. We said we could do.
Yes, we are working on that as well. That will be one of those that we're trying to get. Jeff is actually, we're talking to Mr. Austin about is, while he's doing this, is getting him to do the concrete work. We would go in there and do the excavation ourselves. Let him put the curb and gutter in, and then when we come in to pave the rest of the streets, we would actually add five spaces.
Okay, I appreciate that.
So that's what, that's what the plan is. Brent and I looked at it the other day, and I think we can add the five spaces in there. And we just have to excavate it out and then get the curb and gutter put in. Same way we would do here, we'll put the curb and gutter in first and then come back and do them.
I greatly appreciate that response, so thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, I think there was also some concrete work that was going to be necessary for the crosswalks down at Glen Albans. And so maybe if we could look at that at the same time.
Okay.
So that we can, because we, you know, obviously.
Yeah, once we get him here with Manuel, we can get them to do some additional. I've got a couple of concrete, we're doing some concrete replacement down at Steeplechase at the same time, so.
So, quick question. So we stated that we weren't able to do the crosswalks at Glen Albans and St. Mary's because of the way the curves aligned. Did that change because they didn't, we didn't move them?
Yeah. My understanding was that we couldn't put the crosswalks in unless we had an ADA compliant, I guess, entrance off the curb.
I thought it was because they didn't match up. One curb is a little bit further ahead, so when you're talking about putting a crosswalk, if you put it at the end of that intersection, it's going to be in the street. If you moved it forward, it was going to be in somebody's yard. If you look at how those, those intersections align, they don't line it.
They don't, right. The geometry's a little quirky, and yeah, I can look at that or.
We'll have to look at that. We haven't, Jeff had worked with him on that, and so I honestly don't know off the top of my head. I can't tell you that I've.
Yeah, but seriously, maybe adjustments we could make.
Alignment, so I'll have to do that.
Better align it.
As you know, the, the stop sign on the northbound side is way back. And so I'm, I'm aware of that, and we'll just have to look at it to see what we could do there.
Well, I already responded that we can't.
Okay, okay. No, that's fine.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Just a couple of follow-up questions. So this is, this current concrete's over by the Maples and that part. So you're going to use H U R funding, right, to fund that?
This is being funded as part of the, the first obligation. We did this as part of the first obligation on the USDA loan.
Okay.
So this was being funded out of that. The paving will actually be part of our paving project.
Okay.
We're going to try to throw this concrete work into that first obligation. If USDA doesn't do that, then we'll make it up in another way, shape, or form. But we are trying to put it, because it was torn up as part of the Southwest Quadrant project.
I guess my point is that if H U R funds are used, this will not have any significant impact on the project, the paving you're planning for this coming fall, right? All right. And then just, this will probably be an off question, but I'll ask it anyway. Once you have this tentative list of paving, are we going to be able to kind of give folks kind of a heads up or notice when you might be doing that?
That's the intention.
I know it's weather-dependent, and I understand it, but it's, I got a lot of positive feedback when folks kind of understood when they might have some paving done. So just, so if we could do that again, it'd be great. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, I would just say it is a slippery slope because as we do mill and we find issues, sometimes managing expectations is a challenge because, you know, what we think is there could very well not be there, and we end up spending more money on one section of road, and that eliminates the back end of the list. And so then people are very disappointed, so we really have to qualify that, you know, this is all dependent upon the project ahead of it. So it is, you know, we do want to manage expectations because we don't want to disappoint the residents.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, so we have discussed all around this, but I guess the topic here is moving forward, whether or not we have a consensus to have Austin Dirtworks to, as the contractor for the Southwest Quadrant Curb Repair and Replacement Project. I'm looking for a consensus and.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
And I am too. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, next on our agenda is Director Phipps, and it would be Mr. Manuel for the Bird City Pocket Park Lease Agreement. Right, floor is yours.
I'm sorry, I wasn't expecting the floor, so.
We have a lease agreement.
Right, the Wells, Wells Group had, has presented a lease agreement. It's been, it's been cleared by our town attorney and their attorneys. They've conformed all the language on this as far as a ten-year lease on the property on the northwest corner of St. Mary's and Centennial Avenue for the development of a pocket park to include public art and some walking paths and in the interest of downtown community sustainability. The, like I said, the term is for ten years. The Wells Group will be donating twenty-five thousand dollars to the development of this park. A thousand dollars of that is intended to go back to paying that ten-year lease. So we will have twenty-four thousand dollars from the Wells Group for development.
All right, thank you. Before I ask questions, I'll open it up for the Council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Phipps, does this have anything to do with the amphitheater or is this something separate?
Oh, this is a separate one. That, that one, if, for that, for that one, the RFQ has been posted on the town webpage so that it, and it hasn't been publicized widely yet. It'll be going on the Maryland e-marketplace as soon as I figure out how to do that. So that request for qualifications is out there and ready for submissions. The, this one is a pocket park that is envisioned within the comp plan as a park in the downtown area, so we'll be achieving one of those actions. The Wells Park one is a whole separate category under ARPA funds, but that one is going forward too.
Any other questions?
Just to say thanks and moving this forward, because I know this was talked a number of years ago when, when it was owned by somebody else, and so thanks for pushing this forward, and it does chuck off a lot of blocks. Thank you. No pun intended.
Now that there is a lease agreement, when do you see production starting? And when can we see any type of improvement to that land?
Well, it's going to be after the Scarecrow Festival because there are currently scarecrows squatting on. The, the lease will need to be signed once it's approved and executed. We have EcoBay, some sustainable hardcaping, and a rig guard to go in at the bottom. That's going to take a big chunk of the, that Wells Group is already providing. They anticipate late November they could be able to get in. The, the train, and in the spring.
I did, I did originally, when I looked over the lease, Director Phipps, and I think I want to echo Councilman Jenkins, that this, this is great. I mean, first off, that it, it is right in line with Bird City and actually creating, you know, a downtown space where the community can come in and, and enjoy some fresh green space and not have to worry about cars running them over and stuff walking on the sidewalk. So I like the walking paths. I like the, the seated areas. I like the, the bird baths. My thought was, on the lease agreement, you may not know, Mr. Manuel, you know, more towards this, we're essentially assuming all foreseeable liability of any kind. And I thought that was a little odd in a lease agreement that, that something wasn't shared with the actual property owner, but it does look like we're taking over all the, all of the maintenance, all of the construction, essentially everything but ownership. Is that fair to say in reviewing the lease that they really don't have any other control over this property once we start working on it?
I would say that's fair.
Because if that's, if that's the case, then obviously we're gonna, we're going to be on the hook for anything that happens on the property because we've created it, right?
Right.
Any known or unknown dangers? I was concerned about some things that we may not be aware of, right? Underneath the surface or what we don't touch. But as long as our town attorney is okay with that and we're going in with eyes wide open, then, then okay. But that's, that's, if we're going to take over all control, then we're going to be on the hook. But, okay, thank you.
Yes. Don't we currently maintain that property?
We do not.
We do not?
No. It's private property at the moment. It's private property. We would be taking that over, yes, but ideally, we're going to actually overplant it with native ground cover that will not require as much maintenance.
Please don't let them look like what was at the Dorchester Community.
Oh, no. No, 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 no. Intentional planning will be involved, and which is part of the reason we engage with EcoBay, so they could give us a long-term plan.
And this lease has gone back and forth from there, from, legit had a look at this too, didn't they?
Yes, they did.
And I know their risk management over at Wells Group, because this has been in, in the hopper for quite some time. So, well, thank you very much. So we're looking for a consensus from Council to move this forward to legislation. Councilman Trolinger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thank you very much. It'll take us over to our matters of information for the fiscal impact study. Mr. Manuel?
As Madam Mayor and Town Council, sort of, this is generated from a, I guess, agenda item request from Councilman Jenkins that ended up being placed in the FY twenty-four budget. So in doing some research on this matter, and talking to a lot of the consultants that do this type of work, I was able to narrow sort of our, our idea of what I think we would like to extrapolate out of this to what is called a cost of community services study. And I've got a handout I will give you, and I can provide you all the digital copy. And as I'm reviewing this information, I think, as Councilman Jenkins said, in terms of the whole study, it may be good for us to take this into consideration for a future work discussion so that we make sure that what we are going to pay for is something that's going to be usable and can be easily applied to our sort of land use decisions moving forward. You know, one of the areas that we, as part of the rezoning, or excuse me, not rezoning, the annexation process includes sort of a physical, fiscal statement that the applicant provides. And, you know, one of the things maybe would be, an idea would be for us to have a third party sort of evaluate those fiscal statements as well as other areas that we may be able to improve our processes as we move forward in future annexation considerations. But I just wanted to keep you all apprised of where we're at and what we're doing, and of course, there'll be more to come in the future.
I have a question for you. So for this, I know that we have budgeted for this, and researching this just a tad, the fiscal impact study really would be beneficial for those annexations that we have since right now we are not entertaining any annexations until, you know, the foreseeable future. Do we need to move forward with a fiscal impact study? Or, as you suggested, can we do this on, when we have the annexations come in and have a third party evaluate? What we're looking for, if I have this in my mind straight, the fiscal impact, it is what a house or a business, how will that impact our town? Not only on water and sewer, but schools, even though we don't control schools, traffic, the hospital, our services from Public Works and the Police Department. So that's all great things that we need to know when we're making an informed decision whether or not to annex in more projects. But for right now, is there, is there a reason to move forward, even though it's in the budget, which is great, move forward with a fiscal impact study when it's kind of after the fact?
Are you asking me?
That would be you.
Well, I think it's the will of the councils. I'm staring at my rings. I apologize. You know, it's something that you guys, if you just think that that's something that we should hold off on, then that's fine.
But to me, right now is not the time, but we do have it earmarked. I think that it would be after-the-fact type of study when we have already annexed in, you know, recently a couple of parcels of land. That would have been the time to do it. Right now, I don't see the need to do this, but keep it, I, I'm not willing to pull it from the budget as of yet, just in case something changes. But right now, I don't see the, the need to move forward.
So I just want to, so it's the will of the council, and I would like to see it because it would give us an idea of if anything comes before us in the future, how it would impact us and what the existing annexations are going to do for us. We have no idea what that really looks like because we've never even thought about, you know, increasing taxes based upon all of the development that we've already had. So I would like to see the cost of community service study done, fiscal impact study, however you want to label it. But I would like to know that because we have not known, and we've been making these decisions, and I think it would help inform us on the decisions that we've made. And so we'll know how to move forward before we get there. That's just my thought.
And to your point, well, thank you very much for that. Is this the time to do it since we have already, what, what is it? I guess where I'm going from, what is it going to, what purpose is it going to serve right now? Or is it going to be, my concern is always, is it a study that is going to gather dust on a bookshelf? We, we will absolutely need it moving forward. And when any of the buildings are starting, I mean, we've already annexed in two, but those were, we annexed in the land. We haven't seen the concept. To me, that would be the time that they would have to provide, and, Mr. Manuel, correct me if I'm wrong, they would have to provide traffic studies and all of that, and that's where that third-party evaluation. They would have to provide traffic studies and all of that. And that's where that third party evaluation would come in to say, yeah, their numbers are absolutely right. But do we need a study now on something that's already happened when we can't change it? But we can be informed for the future as far as when we know what the master site development plan is of, I'm going to say the hub or Hawthorne Yards, or any of the other ones when they get, when they get moving on that?
I would, again, if I may, Madam Mayor, echo what Councilwoman Bryant Ward said. I believe we do need it now, if not sooner. And I would refer you to a email I sent to the the town manager, assistant town manager, the finance director, and also carbon copy of the county, the town council in February of this past, this year where I laid out what I believe are the policy justifications for this study specifically. It's specifically referenced in our 2020 comprehensive plan. It's specifically record, it's referred to in our 2022 strategic plan. And I believe that during the, the budget presentation, we looked at in January, there's some reference to this. This would allow the town to understand, not only for the future, but today, what is, how does land development today affect our financing? What properties are effective or not effective? How do we pay for water and sewer facilities with existing development or even future development? And our comp plan, and I will quote directly what we're on one of the page 31 where it says, "The town's tax base is largely residential, which raises the questions about the towns of Bentley to provide expected level of municipal services as residential growth occurs." And I could provide all kinds of studies here in Maryland and across the country that says residential does not pay for itself. So, so, so my point would be, the more information we have today would help us make decisions in the immediate future when we start in January, looking at our next budget. And also as new development, whether it's an annexation or not, what is it going to cost us to pay for it? More importantly, what is the impact on the maintenance costs 10, 15, 20, 25 years out? Who pays for the maintenance costs? Tax, future taxpayers or future residents will pay for maintenance costs. Because I, again, I haven't been able to find it and probably I haven't done enough work to understand what are our maintenance costs today? What does it cost us to maintain one lane mile of road? One linear foot of water and sewer and stormwater management? Not capital, maintenance costs. And so I believe very strongly that we should pursue this as soon as we can.
Mr. Manuel, when is the last time that we had this done as a town?
We haven't.
Never been, never been done.
Okay. Is this something that we could foresee Director Harrington, I know I don't see that she's on, but her using pretty readily, right, in her scope and it may be something that can be piggybacked later. I know Madam Mayor's concerns are, okay, are we doing it too early in that maybe it becomes ineffectual in two years when it may be more ripe? But is this something that, Mr. Manuel, you've seen other municipalities or jurisdictions do where they're piggybacking off of the past study with new information? So the question is, you know, is this still going to be helpful even if we can't use it, deploy it the same breadth, right, that you're foreseeing?
Yeah, I think it would be, you know, it's honestly going to be a model. So the data, you'll have to update the data as you move through time with, of course, the new information, the new values, if you will. So it will be something that sort of like our major facility fees that Baker Tilly did for us. They gave us a product that we could insert the information and develop our own, update our major facility fees annually as part of our budget process. This would, of course, adjust probably each fiscal year. So it would be a a model, if you will, that would have to be maintained.
But this is something that could be used amongst our multitude of departments as, as we grow, not just, you know, planning and development, but facilities, police department, et cetera. Okay.
Do you foresee that it's going to do the fiscal impact study? Is that going to be farmed out or is that our staff that?
We actually initially, Janine had evaluated sort of the request from Councilman Jenkins, thinking that she had the capacity to do that. Of course, time is of a great concern for her. She's very busy and she was not able to. And that's why the monies were put in the budget, because it was something we were going to have to outsource.
Is we are, we looked at staffing. You know, we're planning for increased staffing, but we don't know what that, you know, what that need or what, how we are going to fund that. And that's a big concern for Ms. Larson, often, you know, well, we're going to do these things, but how are we going to fund it? And we've never looked at taxes as we've brought in new homes and new developments and our taxes are still the same. And so if we had an understanding of what the fiscal impact, not only on future annexations, because Pine Grove is not nearly complete. And as they, as they bring in those potentially 3,000 homes, what is that going to do for our police department? And we're looking at, you know, trying to make sure that we can maintain a viable police department with bringing in young officers who will want to stay, but we don't know how we're going to fund that. And I totally understand Ms. Larson when she brings that forward. But I also understand the need to have, you know, Director Stahl have a physically fit team of workers when they're out there. How are we going to continue to fund them? You know, right now, we're saying they're going to pave roads, they're digging ditches, they're doing all of these things. We've got to be able to pay for that some type of way. And so understanding what the fiscal impact on our town is right now with what's already in the works would be very beneficial. And we amend it as we go along.
And I would just add to that, that this allows us to be much more proactive in, in, in thinking about the future and sustainability, fiscal sustainability, but also economic development sustainability, because perhaps we need to think about how we diversify our tax base. It's residential. Why don't, so it could have implications for other types of land uses that do not demand as much services, i.e. commercial industrial properties. So again, from my perspective, this allows us to be much more proactive. It allows us to really, and I agree with you, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, about the tax issue. It also allows us to really analyze and because our strong choice for future councils, whether it's us or in the future, is going to be, you raise taxes or you cut services. And I'm not sure any of us want to kind of be in that position, but that's what we could be facing, given what we went through on the last budget cycle. And there are many examples of other communities, towns as big, as big as we are, bigger, where they've done, they've incorporated this into their daily processes of how they analyze development and how they have a, they literally have a GIS picture of the most productive producing land uses in their town. And there are firms out there that do that because I, I read their blogs and I read their newsletters. Okay, I'm a policy nerd. What can I tell you? But again, and this fits directly, again, fits into our comp plan and our strategic plan that we passed.
Thank you very much. Anything? My, great conversation. It's very, thank you for that. Thank you for your input with that. So we're looking for a consensus, Ms. Manuel, for them to, for to continue along with this process, correct? All right, Councilman Challenger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
All right, you have consensus. Moving on forward. All right, next is radio station road bike path grant award. Mr. Manuel?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, thank you. I guess this is a bit of a celebratory agenda item. We were fortunate to receive from the Federal Transportation Alternatives Program, commonly referred to as TAP, in federal funding for said project, which is Radio Station Road Side Path. And additionally, for the same project, we were awarded through the Maryland Department of Transportation, Kim Lampier Bike Way Network Program, an additional $385,517 to put forth towards this ongoing project, which we are, I think the design phase is complete, so we're ready to move into the sort of construction side of it. And I have a call, I think it's tomorrow, with representatives from MDOT as the kickoff to make sure we're in line to spend this money.
That's great news. So it's 1.8 that we have essentially on the, that is awesome. And I know that Jamie has been working very hard behind the scenes as well. So thank you very much for that information on that. And there's no action that we need. That was just good, feel good. Thanks.
Do any best guess when we could start construction?
I don't know right now. Hopefully, we will be able to develop that. We will have to go out to to bid, first of all. So, you know, I'm not sure if that's going to be six months or less.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Good news.
All right, that will move us to legislation. We have ordinance 23-20. It is the second reading up for consideration of adoption.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Town Council, ordinance 23-20, Chapter 1, Article 3, General Penalty. An ordinance concerning Chapter 1, Article 3, General Penalty, for the purpose of amending Chapter 1, Article 3, General Penalty, to define officials empowered and authorized to enforce municipal infractions to provide manners of remedy or relief to correct, restrain, or rejoin violations of the Code of the Town of La Plata, to renumber existing sections and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. I will entertain a motion to accept ordinance 23-20, Chapter 1, as presented.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we accept ordinance 23-20 as presented, Chapter 1, Article 3, General Penalty.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Yes.
Just a question. Why did we need to define who was empowered to enforce municipal infractions? Why, why would that be a question?
I think it has to be specifically stated within the code. In a lot of areas in our code, it identifies the town manager to do some sort of task or designate. When in a lot of areas, I do not perform said task, but I do have a designate. For example, Ms. Harrington, in some areas, any one of our town treasurer, director of operations, or even chief of police are the designees. So it's not unusual that you have to specify who has the authority to do such.
Infractions.
Yeah.
Councilman Jenkins, how far they're trying to give nobody else penalty for parking in a road?
We did not authorize that as part of this.
I'm not going to do it. It's not my job.
All right, any other discussion? So I have a motion and it's been properly seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to the next ordinance on our chapter, on our agenda, ordinance 23, oh, sorry, resolution 23-35, the slip lining purchase for consideration of adoption.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Town Council, resolution concerning slip lining purchase for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract purchase agreement for the purchase of high-density polyethylene slip lining in all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. I will entertain a motion to accept resolution 23-35 as presented.
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to accept resolution 23-35, slip lining purchase as presented. Second.
Favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Brings us to our next resolution, which is 23-36, the Southwest Quadrant Concrete Infrastructure Repair and Replacement.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Town Council, resolution concerning Southwest Quadrant Concrete Infrastructure Repair and Replacement for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract agreement for the repair and replacement of concrete infrastructure in the Southwest Quadrant in all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to accept resolution 23-36 as presented?
Madam Mayor, make a motion to accept resolution 23-36, Southwest Quadrant Concrete Infrastructure Repair and Replacement as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Brings us to our final resolution of the evening, which is resolution 23-37, the Bird City Pocket Park Lease Agreement.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Town Council, a resolution concerning Bird City Pocket Park Lease Agreement for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a lease agreement with the Will's Group for a 10-year lease of property on the northwest corner of the intersection of St. Mary's Avenue and Centennial Street in all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to accept resolution 23-37 as presented?
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to adopt resolution 23-37, Bird City Pocket Park Lease Agreement as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Motion carries. Brings us to new business, commission reports. Councilman Challenger?
Nothing tonight.
All right, Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
So I wasn't present at the planning commission meeting because I wasn't dressed appropriately to be on camera. But I did talk to Chairman Gann and asked him to, you know, the developer over on Rosewick is proposing a gas station and convenience store. And I know that as long as they meet the town code and comprehensive plan that we have to approve these things. But my question was, what made him think we needed another gas station in that area or convenience store? What thought process did they give to putting those things in place? And while we are moving to a lot of electric vehicles, we only have one place in Charles County that I know of where you can charge electric vehicles. And you're putting a gas station. What about an electric charging station? So Chairman Gann was to bring those questions forward for me because I think that when developers are coming in, we need to, you know, have them think about what they're bringing to our areas. I know their residents are going to throw a hissy fit when they find out we got another department, convenience store and another gas station. They want to see more. And I'm just wondering if these developers are giving any consideration to our communities when they want to come in and develop things. Before they were proposing the gas station and the convenience store, which is right across the street from Giant Apple, they had a daycare. I think we have about three daycares in our area and we've got all of these new developments coming in with kids. But we have maybe two daycares at the most right now. So that would have been a better use of the hand in my mind, but I'd address that, that was the question that I did ask Chairman Gann to bring forward. And it did pass that they moved forward with, yeah.
Special exception, though?
That was the recommendation, a special exception from the planning.
And could I just add, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, thank you for asking that question because that's exactly what I was thinking. Like, do we really need another convenience store and a gas station? It, it, it boggles my mind that, to be very blunt about it, we don't have folks who are a little bit more forward thinking than just come here and just flop stuff down like that's the way we want it or that's the way we do it. So thank you for asking that issue. I think it's very important that you did that. Thank you.
Jenkins, do you have a commission report?
Yes, I have two, two, two commission reports. The Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, which was scheduled for tomorrow morning, has been postponed or canceled. So we'll meet again in early November. And I also wanted to apprise the council that the La Plata Town Center Corporation, we've got a final document waiting for signatures, which I've already done, to go back to the state. So we're about one step short of being back in the good standing of the state of Maryland. We still need two other signatures, hint, hint. So we need to get the folks to sign that so we can move that forward. And then I've, I've kept them somewhat up to date with respect to. then I've, I've kept them somewhat up to date with respect to some of the projects, specifically the one the town managers talked about, was the grant award of the radio station and road pathway. And trying to get, see, we can have another meeting to see what our next steps are, assuming and anticipating us, of us being back in good standing with the state. Thank you.
First of all, I would like to recognize someone that, a new person that is in our, our audience tonight. So thank you for coming to our meeting and being an engaged citizen. I appreciate that. Speaking of engaged citizens, it's with heavy heart that I do announce that our Joanne Warden has passed on. And she was always at our meetings, always had something to say, and both positive and constructive criticism. But the one thing that I really have to say about Joanne is that she had, was at all of our events. She was a big helper to Colleen, and you knew where you stood with Ms. Joanne, whether she liked you or not. I think that even though she pretended not to like me, I think she had a soft spot for, for me. But she will truly be missed as far as her help with the town. And I just send my thoughts out to her family during this difficult time. On a positive note, we had quite a successful fall festival over the weekend. So kudos to Colleen and her crew for doing a wonderful job. There's voting for the scarecrows, which, oh my gosh, if you haven't had an opportunity to walk downtown La Plata, it is amazing. There are a lot creativity out, out the, the, out of, out of the park here. Voting is until the 22nd of October, so please get in there, let your voice be heard on that. Along that lines, this Friday, Friday, the 13th, we have, is our registration deadline for the Veterans Day Parade. It is one of our biggest events. We will have, we usually have about 1,500 people participate with that. So make sure that you register there. I know that people have been watching for the Farmhouse Cafe and Creperita open. Tomorrow is their opening. So they had a soft opening, and I heard that it was quite successful. So make sure that you patronize them, but be patient while they are navigating through their opening. And then I would like to thank publicly Bobby, your crew, Jeff, and, and whoever else was there yesterday to put the flags up on Charles Street in honor of Councilman Goldsmith, and then Captain Bagley and, and Chief for all that you did to have a great send-off for Councilman Goldsmith. I know Captain Bagley was instrumental in securing two of the ladder trucks, and we had that big flag there. And the family has come to, came to me at repass, and they just could not praise the town enough for, for all that they did to make the, the ceremony very special, and to send Jim off in the fashion that he so deserved. So thank you for all of that, appreciated. The escort was appreciated, too. So with that, that is the end of my upcoming events. We do have a reason to go into closed session tonight. So if it is the will of the council, I will entertain a motion for closed session immediately following this meeting.
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to recess and, or close this meeting, go into closed session. And I can't read all the material that's required. Thank you.
Pursuant to?
Pursuant to statutory authority to consider acquisition of real property for a public purpose in matters directly related to the acquisition.
Topic?
Topic. Thank you. Topic would be acquisition of property for municipal facilities or infrastructure and town improvements and economic development.
Thank you very much.
Sorry for the drawn-out motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? I will do a roll call. Please indicate yea if you will go into closed session, if you are willing to go into closed session, and nay if you do not. Councilman Challenger?
Yay.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
And Mayor James is a yes as well. And at that, at this moment, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for coming.